We're on.
Okay, this is the Lakeville Board of Selectmen's meeting of March 25th, 2020. This meeting is taking place through Zoom and everyone, welcome. Agenda item number one, in accordance with the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law 30A20 relating to the 2020 novel coronavirus outbreak emergency, the March 25th, 2020 public meeting of the Board of Selectmen shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com backslash lake cam. You do not need a Facebook account to view this meeting. This meeting will be recorded and available to be viewed at a later date at lakecam.tv. So. As a preliminary matter, this is Leah Fabian, Chairperson of the Lakeville Board of Selectmen. Permit me to confirm that all members, staff and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. So with us is Leah Fabian, the Chair, Rich LaCamera, Board of Selectmen member.
I'm here.
Okay, staff, we have Maureen Candido, Town Administrator.
Present.
Tracy Craig McGee, Executive Assistant to the Selectmen and Town Administrator.
Here.
Lorraine Carboni, Town Coordinator.
Here.
And Police Chief Matt Perkins.
Here.
And Fire Chief Michael O'Brien.
Here.
Okay. Um. This is an introduction to a remote meeting. Good morning, the open meeting of the Lakeville Board of Selectmen is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order, March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting, allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access and not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will not feature public comment. For this meeting, the Lakeville Board of Selectmen is convening by video conference via Zoom posted on the town's website. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All supporting materials have been provided. Members of this body are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda items unless noted otherwise. Uh, ground rules, we are now turning to the first item on the agenda. But before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the Chair will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please also remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the Chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in conversation with other members, please do so through the Chair, taking care to identify yourself. So I already went over agenda item number one, which gives us the ability to do this meeting remotely like this. So agenda item number two is a discussion to postpone the April 6th, 2020 annual town election. I will start as long as I'm here. So last week, we had a lot of questions about whether or not we were going to postpone postpone the annual town election. And at that time, it was unclear by the state what we would be allowed to do or not to do. So at this point, with the governor having put in a stay at home rule, we are contemplating and going to discuss the actual postponing of the April 6th annual town election. I don't know. If. We want to move right to a motion or if Rich wants to discuss anything before and then make a motion or not make a motion.
I can make a motion that we can discuss it, Madam Chairman.
Yep.
Okay, I moved it to board vote in accordance with authority set forth in chapter 45 of the Acts of 2020 titled, "An Act Granting Authority to Postpone the 2020 Municipal Elections in the Commonwealth and Increase Voting Options in Response to Declaration of Emergency to Respond to the COVID-19" to postpone the date of the annual town election from Monday, April 6th, 2020 to an uncertain date.
In June.
Okay.
Um, I will second that motion. So we have the motion on the second, open it up for discussion. Selectmen LaCamera, do you want to talk on it?
I think there's a few things that, you know, we have to consider. And I know one of the things I understand that we have to consider now is that we have to make sure that we try to have this joint election with the Town of Free Town because of the regional school committee members that are elected in both towns. So that's yet to be determined at this point. But, you know, a couple of things that concern me about the having the election on a timely basis before June 30th, besides we have a town meeting on June 1st. And I think that it's in the best interest of not only the town, but also the candidates that the election be held before the town meeting. And I just, I think it's just the right thing to do. It doesn't have to be, but I think something should be considered. So in looking at that and looking at the dates to potentially be available, because I don't think we want to wait until the end of June, you know, to do this for a number of reasons, especially town meetings. So I know now that we have town meeting scheduled for June 1st and that's easily postponed, you know, to a later date. And so maybe the consideration is that we look at having the election on June 1st and move the town meeting out, you know, a couple of weeks to like June 15th. So that's just my input, so.
Okay, I do agree with a lot of the of what you said. I just want to reiterate that I know last week, you know, some folks in town were upset because we didn't just postpone, you know, area towns had done so. But because of the school committee regional positions, it has made it a little bit more tricky for regional school districts to do to do the postponing and the rescheduling. So again, I just want to reiterate to people that, you know, that's a really big concern and that's a lot of work. And it's work that we're willing to do, but we just needed clarification from the state on what actually can be done if the elections have to be done again on the same day. Or if there's any other, you know, some of those clarifications have come down. Some were waiting for clarifications from our legal people. So I just want people to know that we are actively, the clerk is working on this, the selectmen, the selectmen's office, everybody is working on this to make sure that this gets done, you know. I do also agree that had the election been held on April 6th, the folks who were elected would be able to participate at town meeting. I. I think that that's something that I would like to see happen. So again, if that means that we have to postpone town meeting to make sure we get the election in place, I think that that's something that we we should do. But right now, the business at hand is the motion that we have, and that is the motion to postpone the election. So I'm going to do a roll call vote. Leah Fabian, I.
Uh, LaCamera, I.
Okay, so that motion passes, which means that the April 6th election, which is a local election, will be postponed as soon as we have all the information, we will, we will get it all out to people. Maureen, would you like to comment? I thought I heard you.
No, I just said, when he made the motion, I just made a quick amendment to say June 2020.
Yeah, 2020, okay.
It reflects that it's going to be voted in the month of June.
Yeah, it has to be done before June 30th, just for clarification.
The election has to be held.
Correct, 30th, yep. Okay, so if there is nothing else on that, I'd like to go to our next agenda item, which is to review the in-house public safety license agreement with New Singular Wireless PCS and to vote to authorize the town administrator to sign that agreement. I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, I make a motion to approve the in-house public safety license agreement with New Singular Wireless PCS LLC and to authorize the town administrator to sign this agreement.
Okay, just for clarification, it was Selectmen LaCamera that made that motion. And Selectman Fabian is going to second that emotion, that motion. Any, any discussion on that, Rich?
All set, thanks.
Okay, all those in favor, roll call vote, please. Fabian, I.
LaCamera, I.
Okay, next on the agenda, we need to review and vote to approve job descriptions for part-time park maintenance and park department supervisor. We have this on our emergency meeting because work still needs to get done and we need to hire a couple of people. So I'll entertain that motion, Rich.
I make a motion to approve the job description for the part-time maintenance seasonal worker at Ted Williams Camp.
Okay, that motion was made by Rich LaCamera, seconded by me, Leah Fabian. All those in favor?
I.
I, Fabian, I. And. You want to do the park department supervisor also?
Uh, is there, is there three here or just two?
The two, the part-time maintenance worker, yep, and the park department, park department supervisor.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the park department supervisor.
Okay, that motion was made by Rich LaCamera, Leah Fabian, myself will second that. All those in favor, Fabian, I.
LaCamera, I.
Okay. Vote passes, so those have been approved. Under new business, what we have is, we have with us the police chief and the fire chief and also Maureen Candido, and we're going to have the three of them give us some updates. But let's start first with Police Chief Matt Perkins. If you could just give us an update on anything you feel that we should know right now.
Um, in these odd times, I just want everybody to know that we are still out on patrol. We are still enforcing the law. We are answering our calls. Some of the calls that we're answering, if they don't require our presence, we can do that by telephone. Some of the calls and the walk-ins into the lobby, we're handling by telephone and we're taking measures to protect offices and to limit the exposure of the virus. Also, we're, we're working to enforce the governor's order as well. The governor's order is enforced by the Department of Public Health and the Board of Health and Lakeville's Health Agent. And if necessary, it can also be enforced by the police department. So we're just, you know, stepping up our patrols in the different camps, in Ted Williams Camp, in the different parks to make sure that people are adhering to the social distancing and not in violation of the governor's order.
Okay, all right. Anyone on the staff or Selectmen LaCamera have questions?
I'm all set.
Okay, all right, I'm all set too. I'd like to ask now Fire Chief Mike O'Brien if he could give us an update also.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Currently, Lakeville Fire Department is 100% operational. All our firefighters are healthy and, and ready to work. Our call volume right now is very normal. We haven't seen any spike in any COVID-19 related calls. We have handled some, but not, not as many as I think we will handle. Currently, we're in a prep and planning mode. We're gathering supplies and making policies. So when we do get busy, we'll have everything in position to answer the needs of the department and serve public safety. As far as communications, we're in daily contact with MEMA. We have not had any real person-to-person contact with DPH. And we have daily communications with Plymouth County Fire Chiefs and Bristol County Fire Chiefs. Currently, we're experiencing a lot of incoming policies and regulatory stuff that we're sifting through. We're trying to be proactive with the public with our communication. We're trying to have a, you know, put a message out there in the absence of an official message. Sometimes unofficial information gets out there and people put stock in that. So we're trying to battle the misinformation. And along those lines, people listening to this meeting, I would caution you to, you know, to pay attention to official sources, reach out to them if you have to and, and confirm any, any concerns that you might have. Don't buy into some of the hysteria or some of the misinformation that was put out there. So look to our Facebook pages, Twitter pages. And also, I like to put out the, that we have a, a informational line that's been established. And I'm looking for the number real quick, but I misplaced it. But we're going to push that out as well. We have an informational line, so if you have any COVID-19 related concerns, you can call that line. And we might not have an answer for you right away, but we will get you an answer. And if it's anything medical related, that the, the person answering the phone does have a background and can help you out as well. So as far as the training, we're, we're adapting our training to be remote from the, from each other. We're training outside. We're trying to keep our staff healthy and in service. Currently, our, our most pressing issues right now is that we have two state agencies that are running the state response to the call. So we have to duplicate a lot of our efforts. We're trying, all of our resource requests for the town have to go to two different state agencies. And so it creates a little bit of dysfunction for us and it makes us concerned about the reliability of, of aid, state aid in the supply chain. So it's something we're working on and we're, we have the, the fire chiefs organizations and, and the different agencies that we belong to making noise and trying to get this fixed for us. So overall, the department's doing very well and we're ready to do our job and ready for whatever comes this way.
Can I just add to that? The phone number for the hotline is 508-946-0044.
Thank you, Maureen.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Also, I just wanted to add on a much more personal level. I appreciate the efforts of all the, the folks, especially the fire chiefs, but all, all the staff working in both, both areas. Incredible job being done. People are just, you know, bringing their A-game, so to speak. I will also say, and for, we do have a lot of great folks in town who care about our emergency folks. I've actually gotten questions on whether folks can bring you food and everything else. And I know we, we talked briefly about this, but the time for, you know, that kind of stuff to show their appreciation, I think will be after the, the crisis is over. And I'm sure, I'm sure people will, will show their appreciation. But right now, you're trying to, I know both of you are just trying to keep your departments as, you know, clean as lysalled as possible. So after, you know, if folks want to do something for our, our first responders, that would be great. But we sort of have to wait until after this crisis has subsided.
Madam Chairman, may I interrupt, please?
Sure.
Um, if people want to navigate to our Facebook page, if, if our department has a critical need, we're going to put it out there. A few minutes ago, I put out, we were in need of no contact infrared thermometers, medical thermometers. So if you, if you want to help us out, go to our Facebook page, keep monitoring it. We'll post our needs up there and that's definitely something we need right now.
Okay, that would be great. So, and I know that there are a lot of people, they, you know, I believe the governor talked the other day about going to work every day, whatever our daily lives give us purpose. And right now, people are looking for that purpose. So if someone does want to do something to help out, please check out the Facebook page. I know the other day, I think it was the wipes that you were abundantly received and abundant donations. So that, that's great. And that gives people, you know, a way to feel like they're trying to, that they're helping. If we could get, thank you, Mike, Chief, sorry.
Say one thing to Mike, I think there's a couple of other things that, you know, the chief is, is, needs to be addressed is that people need to understand that this line, this call center that they have set up, you know, is to help the town residents and support them and answer questions as best we can. But, you know, some of the calls that we've been receiving is that, you know, where are these cases? You know, located in town and so forth and so on. We cannot disclose, you know, any of that information. So please don't call this line and say, you know, does this person live next door to me or whatever? Because that is controlled, you know, by the state and we cannot, you know, to do that. So thank you.
And just to go off of that, our public health nurse is following up with any and all, will be following up with all cases. There's an incredible amount of work that's being done behind the scenes. And the public nurse must check in with anyone who tests positive daily. So if there's any concerns, where our, our emergency folks are going to know about it. But otherwise, I agree with, with Selectmen LaCamera that, you know, the, that information cannot be given out. If we're all set, then I'd like to ask Maureen Candido, our town administrator, to please give us an update on Town Hall. We know that work still needs to keep moving forward. So if you could just give us an update, please.
So we've moved to kind of a skeleton crew in Town Hall. We're still staffed at the Town Hall and most of our buildings. Public is still not allowed in. We're trying to limit any type of exposure, both to the public and to our people. We've set out up a little, a mail place with all the forms in the vestibule past the Board of Health in between the fire station garage doors. And so if you have a form that you can't get online, that you're having trouble downloading, we have those forms there and we have boxes that you can put your filled out forms and payments in. And that way you can continue, because we do have people working inside, they can continue to process what we need to, to go forward. In addition to that, we're cutting our staffing down. We're trying to keep one person in each office area. And we're switching off to make sure we, our, our facilities maintenance staff has done a phenomenal job going through each building every day and making sure all surfaces that they can touch have been wiped down every day and keeping people inside safe. And then again, with the COA, we're still doing essential services, helping people with the Meals on Wheels and some of the rides to like the pharmacy. But the library is shut down right now. There's someone working either in the library or from home, but not open for any services right now. The transfer station, we still have that open for bag trash only, no recyclables, no contact tractor trash, no leaves and debris at this time. And then the newest phase that we moved into, per the governor's order, was the parks. So at first, we had closed down the playgrounds. All playgrounds are closed down and signage was put out there. But now at Ted Williams, we've also closed down the basketball, the tennis and the skate park areas. It's posted on both entrance signs, wherever there's a door, it's been padlocked. We just need to make sure that we're keeping people from coming into contact with too many people and, and making everyone as safe as we possibly can at this time. As Leah had mentioned, everyone's contributing and everyone's really stepped up. I'm, I couldn't be more pleased with the people I have working for the town and their commitment to just getting everything it needs done. And even down to our newest hire, who, our Board of Health, Edward Cullen, has been doing an amazing job keeping us informed and keeping us safe. So, and to follow up on Rich's point, a lot of my calls that have been fielded by me personally are people calling in concerned about where the people live that have tested positive. And I just want to reiterate, those people are being monitored and looked after. It's the people that are walking around asymptomatic and the people that have very light symptoms and they're the ones that are going out in the public that are real, the real risk. So if you don't have to go out, stay at home, stay, stay with your family and stay at home. Don't bring something home to your family if you don't have to.
Thank you very much. Pretty much says it all. I just wanted again to thank everybody from the town administrator, Lorraine Carboni, Tracy in the office, to everybody at Town Hall, everybody is doing an amazing job. We're just trying to keep things, you know, going because there is still some life being done out there. There's still some business being done. People still need things, need access. If your payment isn't processed, you know, within 24 hours, please, you know, consider that we have a skeleton staff. But there's plenty of information on what is being done at Town Hall. Reach out to the website, there's phone numbers. Almost every department, if you call right now and have a question, if there's no one there, you can either reach out. There'll be an email address that you can reach out to, or we have people getting messages remotely. We really have tried to think of everything to keep Town Hall going while just keeping as few people there as possible. I don't know, Rich, if you want to add anything?
Yeah, I just want to say one thing. The governor is still allowing, you know, the construction business to continue working and that's fine and that's, that's his choice. And it's very difficult, you know, for Nate Darling, our building inspector and Ed Cullen, our Board Health Agent, that, you know, if, if at all possible, you know, even though you can, we can issue, you know, your permits online, those aren't the problems. The problems are the inspections, you know, going out on the inspections. And that concerns everybody that, you know, an inspection, especially inside an existing house, you know, is a concern of them going into the existing house, new construction, just isn't as bad. But if you have a situation where, you know, you're looking for a permit or an inspection, please, you know, delay it if you can or show a little patience because these guys are swamped not only with the inspections and so forth, but we're dealing with the virus and all the other stuff, you know, associated and making sure that, you know, businesses are closed and that are supposed to be closed and they're not essential services. So please do your best to delay it and understand that they may not get back to you right away.
Yeah, especially with inspections where they need to go into people's homes. You know, we have some really dedicated people, but we also don't want, you know, anyone getting sick and then their families getting sick too. So we really are, you know, trying to do as much as we can with what we've all been faced. Okay, next thing on our agenda, thank you to every- Okay, next thing on our agenda. Thank you to everybody. Um, next thing on our agenda is any other old business. I mean, other than reiterating, you know, that um, we're in the middle of budget season. You know, some of this stuff has sort of taken, been, the brakes have been put on. It doesn't mean that we're still not working on it, but we're not having, you know, um, Rich LaCamera is our budget person. I know he's working on numbers. He and Maureen are, you know, communicating and working on numbers. Um, so we, as Selectmen, are still trying to do, you know, what we have to do. Um, I don't know if you have any other old business, Rich, that you want to talk about?
Not at this time, no.
Okay.
We got enough to deal with.
Yep. So this was our first try at, um, a Zoom virtual meeting here. I, I think, uh, I could have been better in a couple of places, but I appreciate anyone who tuned in or will watch this later. And again, there's plenty of information out there. Go to the town website. Um, if you have any specific questions or our email addresses are all, all, all on the town website. So, um, if that's all we have, Maureen, do you have anything else?
No, that's it at this time.
Or Tracy, anything else?
I'm good.
Okay.
I'm all good.
Oh, the, the two chiefs?
All set.
Okay, all right. Thank you to everyone. Um, if that's it, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Uh, LaCamera, so moved.
Fabian second. All those in favor? Fabian, I.
LaCamera, I.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.